Good evening. Welcome to the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for September 19th, 2016. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity as commissioners to serve the people of Haywood County. Give us the wisdom to make correct decisions for our county. We lift up the family of Mark Schwanger nephew, Damon Schwanger, who lost his life Thursday. We ask that you surround the family with your love, peace, and healing. Protect their military, law enforcement, firefighters, and emergency personnel as they strive to keep us safe during these trying times. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Bill. First is, we'll have the first of two public hearings. The first one being for the consideration of the 2017 Schedule of Values. We have Judy Hitman with us here. Judy?
Good evening. At our last meeting, we had asked for a public hearing regarding the 2017 Schedule of Values, which establishes base rates for the reappraisal. I just have a few slides that I would like to share from the previous meeting for those who didn't get to see some of our slides. 2017 reappraisal. North Carolina General Statute 105-286 requires the reappraisal be conducted at least every eight years. Haywood County's last reappraisal was conducted in 2011. Reappraisal includes both land and improvements, residential, commercial, agricultural, and industrial. This process will reset all real property to current market value as of January 1st, The county assessor's office or the commissioners do not create the value of your property. People define values by their transactions in the marketplace. The assessor's office simply has the legal responsibility to study those transactions and appraise your property accordingly. Market value is not always the price for which a realtor may list the property, nor is it the price for which family may sell to another family member. 2017 Schedule of Values. The Schedule of Values describes the methodology and procedures for appraising all Haywood County real estate at market value and present use value as appropriate. At the time of the county's 2017 reappraisal, the Schedule of Values establishes the base rates and ranges which will be in effect until the next reappraisal. It also includes the adjustments that may be used for various types of construction, market conditions, and valuation schedules for land. The tables and rates found in this manual are a base guideline for establishing value. The appraiser uses these guidelines along with the market data to make adjustments in order to appraise individual properties at market value and to establish equitable and uniform values for all properties. Reappraisals are conducted by applying mass appraisal techniques with thorough analysis from appraisal staff and the use of computer-assisted mass appraisal, which is also known as CAMA, software system. The sales comparison, cost approach, and income approach to value are all considered when applicable to appraise all real property. And of course, for more information about the 2017 reappraisal, we do have a tab on the county website. You can go to haywoodnc.net, click on the 2017 reappraisal tab, or you can call our office anytime for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hitman. At this point, we'll open up the public hearing for any public comment. Is there anyone present who would care to comment regarding the 2017 Schedule of Values? We'll limit comments to three minutes each. If you identify yourself and your place of residence, please.
I just wanted to make a few comments. It looks like with the base rate on all homes going up by 5% that this will be a tax increase. In 2011, many of the lower-priced homes received significant tax assessment increases while higher-end homes received decreases. We've witnessed many property tax increases over the last 15 years or so, even in the economic downturn. And I wanted to ask, why should we ever have a tax increase when this is pretty much automatic with building new homes, new businesses? And we continue, though, in Haywood County to see our property taxes going up. I believe this may be a sign that Haywood County is living, not living within their means, and it's causing our people to suffer undue hardships. Wanted to just mention something about neighborhood delineation. I hope this process is followed, I hope we, this time, we follow the Schedule of Values. It would save a lot of people, a lot of trouble, a lot of grief. But Haywood County has not done a good job on neighborhood delineation, in my opinion. That's all I've got. Thank you.
And you, your name is Denny King, is that right?
Yes.
We need that for the record. That's the reason I ask you to provide it. Anyone else present who would care to comment?
My husband and I are homeowners here in Haywood County, and we moved about eight years ago from Forsyth County in Winston-Salem area. And I'll say this, that even when we moved here, we noticed that the taxes here were twice what we paid there. That being said, it's the same amount of square footage except 100 square feet more. Now, we have a family, and families have a lot of bills. And though we don't get a raise every year, costs of living continue to increase. And so I would ask, on behalf of our families, that we keep the prices where they are at the current rate. When I think back to the Great Depression, the way that people lost their farms and their homes was because of the increase of taxes, or because of taxes that they could not pay. And so I would respectfully ask you keep it at the current level and not raise it.
And your name, please?
Angela Beverly.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to speak?
Good evening. I'm Debbie King. I live in the Beaver Dam area. Our neighborhood market rate is 130%. I'm here to speak about the proposed Schedule of Values, and I believe the following is true and accurate. If you approve the Schedule of Values, the base rate for a grade C home, 1,300 square feet, will increase from the current $89.75 per square foot to $94.24. That is a 5.57% increase. The basements will increase 10%, and there were some other increases in there too, but that's all I'll talk about on that today. Unless you decrease the current tax rate, it is very likely that your approval of this Schedule of Values will result in tax increases for many Haywood County property owners. Regarding the neighborhood delineation, the Schedule of Values states that the staff should delineate the larger jurisdictions into smaller neighborhood units, each exhibiting a high degree of homogeneity in residential amenities, land use, economic trends, and housing characteristics such as structural, quality, age, and condition. In 2011, some county delineated neighborhoods were not only similar, but they were very small, some as small as 16 homes or so. But not everyone fared so well. Some neighborhoods are very heterogeneous, and they stretch for miles and miles. My neighborhood has single wide, double wide, old, old farmhouses, newer homes, and everything in between. It is a rural area with diverse properties with grade ranges from B+ good quality to E, poor quality. The CDU ratings are excellent to unsound. So will the neighborhood delineation lines, are they going to change next year, or will they stay as they are now? And why is it that some neighborhoods are so small with similar homes, and other neighborhoods stretch for miles and miles with very diverse homes? In order to be transparent, the neighborhood delineation maps should be online now. We should be able to see every sale that has taken place within each neighborhood. We should not have to pay to get those sales, which we've had to do in the past, to get the sales within our own neighborhood. We had to pay for those. It's my personal opinion that we should do away with the neighborhood delineation. As far as mobile homes, was the correct depreciation applied in 2011? And will the correct depreciation be applied next year? And it's my understanding that David Francis is currently the recycling solid waste administrator, tax administrator, interim tax assessor, and then in an email we received, he has the title of Haywood County Administrator. Is this a new position, and how many county offices and/or titles is Mr. Francis currently
Anyone else who would care to comment? Any commissioners have anything they'd like to say?
Just that, I think last meeting, there was a little bit of discussion on the Schedule of Values from the $89 to the $94. And if I'm not mistaken, was that supposedly because of the inflation due to building materials or whatever? And I'm asking for one of our people to state that, okay?
Up and answer a question.
Introduce yourselves.
I'm Ron McCarthy with RS&amp;M Appraisal Services. I'm assisting Haywood County with the revaluation. Yeah, the increase was due to material cost, not labor. Labor kind of stayed the same, so the increase was for material.
Okay.
And what we're seeing now on--
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, just that, okay. So when we do these revaluations, we have to take the information that we have at now, in this moment, to determine the values. And that's what we're doing with this. We can't go back and say, oh, it was 89 six years ago, and that's where we're going to stay. We have to take what's in this moment now.
Yeah, also, you have to consider that a lot of the homes are now eight years older. So even though there's an increase in the replacement cost of a new home, the older homes may get a decrease or stay the same because there'll be additional depreciation for the eight years that have passed since the last time. So the $94 is not 100% of $94. It's based on whether the home is new, old, mid-range, well-kept or not.
Just a note, Haywood County's tax rate is .5661, and we're 24th lowest in the state, which means there are 76 counties that have a higher rate than we do. So I'm pretty confident. We're kind of a mid-range county, but yet 76 counties have a higher tax rate than we do right now. And the lady mentioned Forsyth County, their tax rate, and they had a revale done in 2013, but their tax rate is .731, which is 29% higher than Haywood County. So I believe Haywood County's a pretty good value in real estate. I know when we had the revale done in 2011, we lost in value, I think it was 2% from what I remember, and I know other counties were, you know, down in value. And I'm always, I always want to tout Haywood County because that's, you know, part of my business is surveying, and it's, I want us to have a strong real estate market. But I think, I know Henderson County's, when they did a revale, I forget what year it was, but they were down 10%. And Cherokee County was down 30%. I do remember that. That was a big difference, so. But Haywood County had only decreased 20, in 2011 only had decreased 2% from 2006. But, so we are 24th in the state. I believe I had looked at that the other day. I was wondering how we compare to the rest of the state. So in 76 other counties, including Forsyth County, you're going to pay a higher tax rate on the same value house. So, you know, I want to make sure people in Haywood County know that they have good values on their homes, and I'm proud that I live in the county I do.
I think it bears repeating, too, that the Tax Office nor the commissioners create the value of a piece of property. It's created in the marketplace, a willing buyer and a willing seller, in an arms-length transaction. That determines the value. And, you know, it's not a matter of tinkering in one neighborhood or another to satisfy any particular group. It's a mass appraisal done, again, with arms-length transactions. And I know some of the people who spoke here don't agree with that. They appealed their value to the state, and the state found that Haywood County was correct. So, Kirk?
Ron, if you could, could you just explain how the collection of the information on the transactions is used with the Schedule of Values to come up with the assessed value?
Okay, it's a three-pronged process. We do a data collection to get information on building costs, building materials, labor costs. We also look at sales of properties. We look, we first look at sales of newer homes to establish our base rate of $94. Then we look at sales of older homes to establish our depreciation tables. We also look at the neighborhoods, if you will, the location of the properties, location of the homes. I hope I answered your question.
I guess what I want to get across is that how driven is the determination of the assessed value by the transactions?
Okay, the assessed value and market value should be the same thing unless you have assessments for farm use, elderly exemption, things of that nature. But market value and assessed value will be the same thing.
Okay, so the assessed values, our goal is to get those assessed values as close as we can to the amount of the transactions, or the historical transactions for the last year or two, right?
Yes, sir. As of January 1st of the revaluation date.
Okay. And so you, you as an appraiser, or us as the county, and like the screen show indicated, we can't determine those values because there's people out in the marketplace, the buyer determines what they want to purchase the property for, and the seller determines what they want to sell it for. And so fair market value is determined by those people, not necessarily the county or you as appraisers.
That's correct.
So, Ms. Schwanger, I didn't think that I'd ever say this, but back in Richmond County, of course, they have a high tax rate, about 92 or something like that. But my mother died about three years ago. I tried to get the tax rate increased on the house because when someone's going to buy a home, they're going to look at tax rate. They don't want to pay more than what you're paying taxes on it. So I never did succeed in that. So it can work against you if you're going to want to sell your home. You don't want one real, real low.
What percent complete are we in the reappraisal, would you say?
I think Greg and Judy could answer that. We're, the commercial part of it, we're 95% complete with visiting those properties. We're still looking at transactions that occur afterwards, but I'll let these guys answer that.
Okay.
We're about 75% complete.
And is it accurate to say that some properties have, values have increased, some have stayed the same, and some have gone down, depending on where you are in the county?
That would be accurate. Yes.
Okay. Ira, does you or anyone have any comments from the county administration?
I know they have all, you see several of the people out here in the assessors group have been working very hard to do exactly what you mentioned earlier, which was to be very fair and look at outside values. The assessor doesn't set the value, just like you said, from factors that are coming from their own personal experience or from transactions that are foreclosures. They're not getting information from us on how to set the values. They're looking at the market rate values to set this. And this is also a legal requirement, and I think that's when someone said, why can't we just leave the values as they are and let sales go? That's, that would be a good thought, but we are required by law every periodically update years to go ahead and do a reassessment. And so we set these periodically without waiting to the last minute to do that legal requirement.
And neighborhood delineation is important because it allows like homes in like areas with a lot of commonality, you know, to be judged, the value to be judged. You wouldn't want to have comparing prices in Eagle's Nest with prices in Crusoe. That doesn't fit in terms of commonality.
Correct.
Is that the concept?
Yes, that is correct.
Can you tell me a little bit, what do you see in lot sales at this point? I mean, and this is my experience from closing transactions over the last couple of years. I mean, what you're going to see is the higher-priced homes have not, they've not sold as much. The bigger homes, they don't sell as much, and the values have decreased in those, whereas you have a lot of sales in the lower-priced homes. Once you go above 300, then you, then it's getting a little bit tough. But what I haven't seen is many lot sales at all. And so, and I know we have an abundance of lots out there, so what can people anticipate as far as lot values go?
Well, we've looked at all those sales for the last six years, really. We have all sales from 2011 to date. And the vacant land we've seen has really dropped. It's hard to put a percentage on that, but there's, it's such a buyer's market for the vacant land because there's so much of it. And so people can set, you know, they can negotiate. And so we've seen a lot of the higher-end home subdivisions, what they were getting $200,000 a lot, you know, they're just not getting that anymore. And I mean, it's dropped considerably to where we've seen it in the $80,000 range, where they were getting $225,000. Even in the smaller lots in some of the subdivisions, we're seeing that that's typically around $25,000 to $30,000 a lot, where it had been $50,000, $55,000. So we're going to see some areas which were small where there could be an increase in lot, but typically, I think overall, we're going to see a drop in overall vacant land prices. And that's just based on the sales, you know. This neighborhood delineation, you know, this has been something that we've heard a lot about. And in previous years, people have always said, well, you're valuing, you know, I live in Hazelwood, and you're valuing me just like I live in Laurel Ridge, or you're comparing me to Smoky Mountain Retreat. And so we looked at that, and other counties across the state, they use this neighborhood delineation. This is just not something that Haywood County has come up with, okay? But what that did was, it allows us to look at these houses, similar houses. We're not, we don't compare Hazelwood or Crusoe to Springdale Country Club. And so it's a more fair assessment, and that's the whole goal, is to be fair and equitable. It's tough, it's tough to look at 49,000 parcels as one, so we broke it down into 900 and some neighborhoods so that we have a better opportunity, better chance to make it more fair and equitable.
Did the study determine how many homes are actually in Haywood County? Actual dwellings?
I'm not sure of the number of improved properties, what the difference is.
Yeah, I'd like to find that out sometime.
Yeah, we can, we can find that out.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, and hearing none, then we'll close this public hearing, and it'll be scheduled for a vote, I suppose, the next board meeting, Ira?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, then, I'll open the second public hearing for the consideration of an interlocal agreement with the town of Canton for infrastructure and economic development for West Carolina Freightliner, Western Star. Recognize Ira Dove.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners and members of the public. This is about an interlocal cooperation agreement with the town of Canton on an economic development project, the Western Carolina Freightliner, Western Star project, where they have purchased the old Anderson facility. This has to do with the county giving $200,000 in this, under this interlocal agreement to help develop a road and fix a, fix the road going up into that place so that Western Carolina can relocate there and have the trucks and everything. This is very important to economic development. The Western Carolina Freightliner and the TW West have agreed to do at least a million dollars' worth of improvements on that property. They're going to add four bays. They're going to add a second shift. We're talking, quite a few additional jobs could be added to that facility. They are also, just to highlight some of the other things that are in this agreement, the town of Canton is putting up some money. And the town of Canton will actually have the agreement, we're having a local agreement with Canton, they will have the agreement with Freightliner and the owners of the property, TW West, because they have the ability and authority to handle the roads, and that is within the town of Canton, that particular road. So this is a very good move towards economic development, for those who want to comment on it. The only other thing I would say not related, and this is not related to this agreement, we are working diligently on a number of economic development agreements. I noticed that we've been working with the chamber and with the Economic Development Council. I know we have Mark Klaesby here. We've been working with the town of Canton on this. We have another project in the works, that's a kind of a stay tuned. And earlier it was mentioned, how many hats does David Francis have? Essentially, he gets one paycheck. I'd like to make that clear. And for that, he does a lot of different things, and among those, he helps us with these kind of projects. But it's one paycheck under one county thing, under all authorities, under the board, so it's not a bunch of different offices. Although, he does so many things that people sometimes wonder. So I would like to just add that out there, and he was involved in this project along with myself, Mr. Klaesby, and the people from Canton, great, you know, they get a lot of props because they did a lot of work on this and are going to be dealing directly with Freightliner. It's going to be a good move out there on Champion Drive.
Well, this certainly was a meaningful economic development project.
Yes, and Canton did a lot of great work in this, and it's been a real team effort to get everybody working together.
Collaboration is important, so.
Yes.
At this point, I'll open up for any public comments anyone may have regarding the interlocal agreement with the town of Canton and Haywood County. Okay, I don't have anyone coming forward. Does any commissioners have any questions or comments they'd like to make?
It needs some rain. Bad.
That falls in the category of a comment, I guess.
And a positive comment, we got two football teams undefeated, so the county needs to be proud of that, Mike?
Yeah, that's true. I just want to make a comment about the project, okay?
Oh.
Then I'll go off, and then we can go on about that. Serving as commissioner on the Economic Development Council, we've been really involved in this project for quite some time. And, you know, you've got a piece of property that's sitting on the corner in Interstate 40 over there, you know, is fairly, you know, a wealthy piece of property or whatever, but it was beginning to be dilapidated from sitting there, and nobody was, you know, buying or checking, you know, and it's sold. And now you've got a company that's going to come in and really, you know, do a lot of work and a lot of improvements. It's going to up the base value there for, so it's increasing our property taxes. They're going to bring jobs into our county, good-paying jobs into our county, so additional opportunities for our citizens. And then along with that, it's an increase in sales tax. So we've got a three-pronged benefit from this agreement that we're working on and trying to, you know, help this company get set up and get ready to go. So that's why we did what we did, and it's an opportunity to enhance that area, enhance opportunities for our citizens, and, you know, and then also add additional revenues for our county.
How many jobs was it again? Did Ira say? How many jobs, Ira?
The initial, the initial amount that they're coming in with--
The initial, the initial amount that they're coming in with is going to be between 25 and 35. They'll add that second shift. They're hoping to grow it in the next five years up to as many as 60 out there. So...
Anyone else?
Yeah, I think one of the things that our constituents want and have asked for is, you know, more jobs. And it's a difficult time to create and get more jobs. And so, you just kind of scratch at it and get what you can. And this was a good opportunity. It's not a great opportunity, it's not what people see as a success, that we don't have 300 jobs coming in. But, you know, just like Mike said, it takes care of, or improves a piece of property that has not been utilized, and it does create some jobs. So, I think it's a good idea and it's what our constituents want us to do.
Well, even though, you know, we've had some investment here to help this situation, it's going to pay itself back for us, you know, relatively soon, too, so...
And as Kirk mentioned, a lot of times, people want to see the 300 and 400, 500 jobs. That can be a mixed blessing. Diversification is sometimes leads to a healthier economy. We saw what happened with Daco. I mean, that was, at one point, that was close to 1,000 jobs, I think, at one point. And now, there's zero. So, you know, we just need to keep looking for, you know, the growth corridors. And I think diesel mechanics and diesel sales and truck sales along aisle 40, I think is a step in the right direction. Anything else?
If you had, if you did get 300 jobs, they can also leave it at one time, too.
That's, yeah.
It goes along with what you're saying.
Okay. If there's nothing else, then, we'll close that public hearing and schedule the approval of the interlocal agreement for the following meeting. All right, at this point, we'll move to the public comment session. Anyone present who would care to address any matter of county concern? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to constituent concerns. Bill?
I've given mine. I hear we're not getting enough rain, so mighty dusty out there.
It is. Bill? I mean...
I don't have any.
Kevin? And Mike?
Just want to bring up, you know, we're kind of in a little situation right now. We spent a conversation before the meeting was about our gasoline situation throughout the county. And just from someone that's right on the front line with it, just don't get excited, things are loosening up. I come in, you know, some's out, some have it. It's going to get better as the days go on, so...
Okay, that's good. It's always good advice to not panic. We don't have any administrative or agency reports. Is there any adjustment to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. We've had the opportunity to review the September 6, 2016, regular meeting minutes. Are there any changes to those? Then we'll move to Judy Hickman for approval of the August 2016 refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries. Judy?
Requesting the approval for the August refunds, releases, adjustments, and discoveries. Don't have anything to report that's out of the ordinary at this time.
Okay. And we've had the opportunity to review those as well. Okay, then we'll move to the August 2016 tax collection update. Mike Matthews, our tax collector. Mike?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Evening.
Tonight, I think the way we've done it the past couple of years is as far as the first month of August for the current collections, they kind of leave that out because it's only a couple of percents here and there. So, what we did have tonight was the delinquent collections that we, or delinquent taxes that are out there. It's 2,278,000, and that's of, as of July 31st. Here, over the past few weeks, we've been working a little bit with different reports, you know, think I have one, and then want to tweak it and add a little bit more to it so we get all the questions answered. So, we've just about got that completed for you, I guess that'll be on the next meeting. But doing that, I've definitely found a couple of things that we, I wasn't aware, or that we weren't aware of, is different enforcement actions of what works and what doesn't work. So, I think it's opened up a lot of new ideas for us, not ideas, but just different things that we can, that we're falling short on, that we can address. And bills have gone out early this year, so we're looking forward to an early start on the year, a fast start on the year.
So, you've identified some other strategies that you can use?
We have, yeah, I mean, I had some originally when we first talked about doing this, I had some. And then, after seeing some of these reports that we don't, these aren't reports that we generate or that we have access to, we had to actually call one of the guys that works for us with Keystone and actually create some of these reports. So, it opened up a lot of things that I wasn't aware of, that we weren't aware of as a staff, so it shows us some new avenues to try to go down, so...
Ira, you've done some research, haven't you, as well, on some of the numbers? Anything you'd care to share?
Yes, we've been, the reports have been pulled that were just discussed. In those reports, and we got a couple of different years, and we looked at a couple of different methods of collection. And I'm just going to go year by year, and we're talking only on the delinquents. And of the delinquent taxes, what I'm going to talk about is just the stuff that's part of the ad valorem and basic levy. So, it's part of that $43 million levy, because a lot of things are collected in the office, like the fire departments and stuff like that. So, these numbers don't include all of the additional collections, just the basic levy collections. And of those, at the January 1st, or July 1st, 2014, we would have had about $2,774,907 basic left to collect. At the, and there were different methods that are used for enforcement, and I'll go to those a little more as we get closer to today. And so, over that year, between July 1st, 2014 and June 30th, 2015, of that, about $1,097,171 was collected. And those methods that were talked about a minute ago, for example, where we're using attachments a little more heavily, garnishments more heavily back then, foreclosures have gone down a little bit. But those were some of the, a couple of the major methods that were a little heavier worked. At the following year, July 1st, 2015, we had about $2,458,023 that were owed, because you have some taxes coming on that weren't paid in the prior year. So, you have to know the three numbers to know a little more what I'm going to say. And I'll give you one more, which is where we were July 1st, 2016. We were at $2,522,000. So, the first year period, which was July 1st, 2014 to June 30th, or 2015, that was the million dollar, $97,000 collection. In the period from July 1, 2015 to June 30, 2016, we collected, the tax collector office collected $720,629. The garnishments and attachments were down significantly. So, I think that's the plan, he's coming back and saying, you know, we've got some other methods we're going to try and get back on and do. So, that's what we've got, yes.
Yeah. The garnish was the really thing that stood out to me, more so than anything else. I mean, the attachments, we're getting into the attachments, we've always worked the attachments. But we've got a fairly new staff, but the garnishments were what really stood out to me as where we're falling short on with that. And we're not talking about a ton of money, but in the grand scheme of things, it is. So, it's a lot of money in small increments with the garnishments.
Right. You know, of course, you know, the public may say, well, what about delinquent taxes? Well, if you think about it in terms of your tax rate, if you've got $2.5 million that's not collected, that's between 3 and 4 cents on the tax rate. And, you know, the next board of commissioners will be setting a tax rate. And if you factor that in, that becomes real, then. It becomes important to each taxpayer when you look at it that way. So, that's the reason Mike is preparing a plan to use every tool in the toolbox to collect every debt that's legally owed to the county. Do you have anything else, Mike?
Nope, I don't have any.
Okay. All right, so you'll have that, you'll be able to talk more about that plan in the next board meeting.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Any Commissioners have any questions?
As a taxpayer, I want, you know, I've paid my taxes, I want everybody to pay their fair share, too. I think that's what we need to do. It's too bad we have to do that, but some people are just, they don't pay. They don't think they have to pay, so...
That's definitely one thing we haven't done. We haven't given any breaks at all down there, so everybody, I mean, everybody's treated the same, so...
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move next to Julie Davis.
Good evening.
With a budget amendment, Julie?
I have just one budget amendment for you tonight. This one is a special revenue fund, our emergency 911 fund versus the general fund. It's $157,433,000. But what this is exact, actually, is like we have been bringing you in past meetings, some commitments that we had at the end of the last year that didn't actually get completed by June 30th. So, we're having to move those commitments into this fiscal year. We had purchase orders outstanding that we had to close. So, this is what this is, and it's in our Fund 23, it's our special revenue fund. Taking it from fund balance, appropriation of fund balance, because fund balance was not reduced at June 30th since these weren't not paid.
Any questions of Julie? Okay, thank you. All right, that concludes our consent agenda. Any observations or questions? Hearing none, would entertain a motion that the consent agenda as presented be approved?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Okay, we'll move to old business. First, we'll be requesting approval of the high-impact ordinance. Ira Dove?
Yes, and Chris Wood is here if we have some extra questions on that. We have, there was not a public feedback at the hearing. We did discuss some things at that public hearing that needed some attention. I'm just going to briefly touch on a few of those points that were changed. Number one, in response to the combustible and flammable bulk fuel facilities, we made that into a Class 1 and Class 2 situation so that if you have a retail seller under 50,000 gallons, small quantity retail sales to the public gasoline for cars or small propane tanks for campers and barbecue grills, they're going to be in the Class 1 category. Class 2 is really going to be more wholesale facilities. So, by making that and following it through, you'll notice that there's only a 50-foot setback on those Class 1s now. Some of the other things that we looked at clarified a definition of development permit, we clarified a definition of public school, that was one of the questions. There was a question about making it reciprocal, saying that should it all just be on the one business owner who has the facility if someone else wants to move a daycare next to their, the place that they have like an asphalt plant or something? Should it all be just on the business owner to do that? And so, we have a reciprocal separation agreement, meaning that anyone who's going to open a business related to those protected things, public schools, private schools, childcare facilities, daycares, hospitals, nursing homes, anyone who does that would also have the reciprocal. Because the main thing, and this is what I think we have to remember on this, is that the purpose of this is the protection of vulnerable populations. And as was pointed out, if we don't make that reciprocal, we could fail in our main purpose. Our main purpose is to protect vulnerable populations who would have the need for more time to evacuate if something happened at one of these other facilities. Looking through, I think those are the major changes that we have. Little bit on the expansion for non-conforming uses, that gives a little more leeway if someone is trying to expand their business there. But those are the main changes.
Okay. Chris, do you have anything you'd like to add? No? Okay. Then I'll open it up for questions. Anyone have anything they'd like to have clarified, or? Been looking at this for a while now, I think the combustible Class 1 and Class 2 is a good solution to that problem.
Would you point that out?
Yeah, I mean, I was really concerned about that, and you know, I mean, that's, and you know, we addressed that, and so...
And two, Mr. Chairman, it's just a matter of time before it would have to be addressed. And I'm glad we are addressing it now before something develops that forces our hand.
Yeah, being reactive is not the best way to approach it.
Right.
Okay, well, if there's nothing further, then, would entertain a motion that the high-impact ordinance as presented, today's date, be approved.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. All right, the second item of old business is request to reconsider irrigation system for the Justice Center grounds. Commissioner Enslie.
Okay. I've noticed that along the Justice Center, we had, the grass is, looks like my pasture, which is, it's about burned up. And we had talked about an irrigation system being part of the fund balance. If we had the money, that we would try to do that. And I was confused the night we voted on it to, I thought we were voting to approve the whole, the whole list, and I guess we were approving to take it out. And then, we voted on the list with that taken out, and I didn't want it taken out. And I know since I voted, I made a mistake. I was confused about the vote, and I would like to see it out there because you got the lush, you got the grass that we have now from the irrigation system that, and then you have the burnt grass over next to the Justice Center. And I'd like for it all to be uniform. I think it should be uniform. When we have visitors up in the summer, which is primarily when they come, I just, I would like to have that, you know, I'd like for us to reconsider that. And under that, I would like to make a motion to have the irrigation system for the Justice Center completed using funds from the fund balance and approximate cost of $22,000.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I second, and I guess I was in Pittsburgh or Pennsylvania somewhere then, because I misunderstood. I was kind of thinking we were voting to take it out and we'd go back and vote again. So, based on that, I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Well, I mean, I voted against the one in front of the courthouse, and I'll continue to vote against this particular issue. And I'll say that our employees have had a one cost of living increase in the last five years. There are many things that we can do with money. I know that this is only $20,000, but you know, you have to pay attention to every dollar. And, you know, we've got one coming up on the next, in the new business, $93,000 for fencing that I think is needed, that's more money. But the $20,000 for this, I mean, I can't, I can't support that and not, and walk in the aisles and look at the employees every day that I have to.
Any other comments or observations? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would call for the vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye, whatever.
Okay. All right, the motion passes three to two.
I can't hear you.
She needs to, Mike and I, Mike and I will note.
Okay, we'll move to new business. First item is requesting approval of the JCPC certification and approval of the recommended board members to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. We have Brian Matlock, the chairperson of that board.
Thank you. Nice to meet you guys for the first, well, some of you, I know, be before you for the first time. I'm Brian Matlock, I'm juvenile court counselor with Haywood County and the newly elected Juvenile Crime Prevention Council chairperson. So, I presented to you the, one of the goals was to get the board filled. It's not been filled for several years. As of right now, there are only three positions that are not filled, and I am still working on those. That would include a business person from, business community person, someone from the district attorney's office, and someone from the police station, which it doesn't clarify which one, so it could be one of any of the four. And I do have two possibles. So, in the future... So in a future date, I will have those names for you, hopefully. So presented before you were the statute of the North Carolina Statute of Juvenile Crime Prevention Councils. We have to present these names to you for approval and voting to be official board members.
Bill, I know you're on this council, do you have any observations?
Yeah, I support, we have, we have a good group that meets, but we have some areas that you just mentioned. It's hard to get representation from those areas. So, but I recommend we go with the people listed, the personnel listed on.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none then would entertain a motion that the JCPC certification and approval of the recommended board members be approved.
So moved.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you very much, Brian, thank you. Next up is Dale Burris with a request to have fencing at some area convenience centers approved.
Good evening. We did get a little bit of rain in Waynesville last night, if that helps you. Not much, we got a little. Yes, I'm here to present the five convenience centers. Worked with Chris Boyd and David Francis on this. Dave and Chris really kicked this off. And if you've tried to get into fencing lately, we don't have very many local fencing contractors now. So Chris had actually got a quote from a fence company, I'm sorry, Town and Country Fence out of Charlotte. B. Allen Construction actually did some interior fencing, actually exterior fencing for us at one of the convenience centers and some interior fencing at another facility to secure a storage area, two of them actually. So I'm here to request that this fencing be installed at Beaver Dam Convenience Center, Bethel Convenience Center, Crusoe Convenience Center, Jonathan Creek Convenience Center, and the Jones Cove Convenience Center. And the amount of, and in your document, the estimate shows an additional one at Highway 110, but that one is being on hold right now. Now, this fence will be eight-foot chain link fence, new hardware, new gates, with a 75% privacy slats. These are, these are actually not your typical privacy slats that you've seen at other locations. It just slides in the chain link. These are called, the name of it's actually noodle link. And you can, you can Google that if you'd like to. It's a really neat product. It's more or less a, it's a PVC product that slides down in the fence, similar to the diagonal slats you saw before. But these go vertical. So, and they're actually 75%, and they're 75% wind load. So you're actually been able to let some wind escape out of the area instead of being at 100%. These are translucent, so they're 75% translucent. So we've tried several different products. We've, we've, we've used the PVC coated fence. Well, one location, Hazelwood Convenience Center, we used the black PVC coated fence with the wire mesh, the tight wire mesh on the half-inch. It really looked great at first, but now after, you know, so long, some parts of it is actually turning just a little bit, or getting powdered, I guess you could say. And people liked the black at first, but now they're kind of backing off going, you know, is there not another color? Well, this company actually offers multiple different colors. And I'm not going to call out, there's like 10 of them. But, you know, the gray, if you've seen gray metal roofs and things like that, it seems to be more, works better with the environment and the sun and everything like that. But that's not my decision to make, you know. But I'm just bringing the information, request of approval for B. Allen Construction.
Okay. If approved, this would be paid for by funds collected with the availability fee, which was increased two years ago, I think. We talked then about upgrading our convenience centers, having some be almost super sites where you have a collection of about anything, oils and the like, compactors. And many of these are either in communities or very close to them. And I think we have an obligation to make them, we don't want to hurt people's property values that are near convenience centers. Because I believe that we'll probably, I don't foresee a time when we have door-to-door collections of solid waste in Haywood County. It's just not feasible, I don't think. But, so we're going to have this, this set up for a long time. And many of these sites have never really been upgraded since they were established.
I can assure you that I've been here nine, eight years in October. And as far as I know, the only one that's been truly upgraded is the Hazelwood Convenience Center.
Right, right.
That I'm aware of.
Yeah, and we're, you know, taking that process step by step. And I know the Fines Creek, one, the bank caved off under it, it's being moved some distance. And hopefully, hopefully, as we, as we discuss later, we'll have a possible solution to the 209 center as well. So, any comments before we have a vote on this?
No, I agree. It's, the convenience center are a great benefit to the people of the county. And also keeps our county clean by making it easily and readily available for them to get rid of their trash, which is a constant, everyday problem. And one of the, one of the things that we tackle here more often that we would like. So, I mean, keeping those places safe and their appearance the best we possibly can is a good thing.
I believe places where, you know, they pick up your trash once a week. And I much prefer having a convenience center. You don't have to time when you have fish as often. That way you can just eat it whenever you want. You don't, you don't want it in the summertime in your garage.
I have that, I have that trash pickup as well, that I pay for, for the town. And I probably use the convenience center more, and I take my trash out to the road. Because it seems like some dogs don't get fed, and I feed them with my trash. Don't want a dog getting run over because I've dropped my trash.
Well, bears and coyotes around my neighborhood, it makes it tough to put garbage out.
We don't have any where I live at, that I'm aware of.
It's a good thing you didn't say that at the last meeting, Dale. There are few people here probably wouldn't have liked that too much.
Anything else?
You know, the fencing allows us to put these centers in areas you wouldn't, you wouldn't think would be accepted. And I think of Mooney Cove down here. You really, cause of the fencing, you really don't notice it. It's close to restaurants and everything, churches and everything else. And they're most used, I believe.
The busiest one in the county, I believe. Okay, then, if there's no objection, would entertain a motion that the B. Allen Construction be authorized to install new fencing at Beaver Dam, Bethel, Crusoe, Jones Cove, and Jonathan Creek Convenience Centers, in the amount of $93,195. And again, this comes out of solid waste funds.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teal. Okay, next up is Ira Dove with some comments regarding the US Forest Service plans or proposals to establish wilderness, additional wilderness areas in Haywood County.
Yes, the, the board voted on February 2nd, 2015 in relation to the wilderness. And the resolution that we passed was a simple statement. Essentially, be it resolved that the commissioners do hereby stand in opposition to any additional wilderness designated areas where land management practices are reduced within Haywood County. And through the process with the Forest Service and in the dialogues, we learned that the simple statement, we've learned as a group, the simple statement is not as effective as a very specific statement. And in fact, they ask for a more specific statement. So the letter that is addressed the Haywood County Concerns Areas Proposed For Analysis and the Forest Plan Deus by Alternative is before you. This outlines and discusses the three areas in detail that they look to add to the Forest Plan. One being Graveyard Ridge Extension. And in this area, you know, we, there are photos in this to show you that you'll go from a well-marked trail and a blazed trail. And one of the things in wilderness is solitude and untouched. But I would submit to you that, at least it's been told to me by experts who have looked at these areas, that there's not really anywhere that was untouched up there or may qualify as wilderness. And the concern is if you go from a really populated and well-marked trail into some areas and you stop maintaining them, you might, might increase some public safety factors. That was one of the concerns. And also diminish the use factors. But we looked at the specific areas so that you would have the opportunity. It's not another resolution, it's simply adding to your comment from the resolution that's already, the board has passed. You've already made the decision that you don't want more wilderness. In our dialogues that have happened, it's basically you need to be specific as to why these are the specific areas and the specific thoughts. There's some photos of Sam Knob's extension. Again, you'll notice that a lot of these things, you're not seeing the real old growth trees. These areas have been touched before. You're seeing, some of these have roads nearby on the sides of where they're looking to do wilderness. A gun range is very nearby one of the areas as well. So whether these would qualify in the definitional sense, I guess, is something to discuss. But that's why I stand before you tonight, so that you have the additional comment that we would file if you vote, file the additional comment with your resolution.
Well, you know, I've always looked at this as a, you know, needing a healthy balance between allowing the public who owns the property access to enjoy it. You know, with a lot, a lot of rules on having trails and so forth. But if you, if you go too much wilderness, it grows up, then the very people who own it and are paying for it can't oftentimes use it. And then you don't have good signage, and then people get lost. And then Haywood County bears the cost of rescue, which is very difficult in true wilderness areas, because you can't have motorized vehicles. So now you're on foot. I just think that, you know, when you, when you look at the balance between access and not having a negative environmental impact from a trail which goes, you may be only impacting one-tenth of 1% of the acreage when you go on a hike. So that's my thoughts, what do y'all think?
Well, just from looking at all this, these are fairly heavily, I mean, when, I mean, popular areas that are used quite a bit by citizens, the public. And, you know, in the end, they're well-maintained and maintained by the, because of the usage and all. And so, you know, my, my opinion would be, you know, why would you want to impact that somebody who they can enjoy and maybe lessen their ability to do that when it is public property?
Many people come here to hike. And if you, if you really can't use the property in that way, then it would have a negative financial impact over time.
Well, they, yeah, they'd still be hiking in the wilderness, but it's different. They can't go in groups of 10, they can't build campfires and they, stuff like that. It's different.
And it's, you know, it's really not like you're, I mean, you're, you're changing. I mean, if you, if you do the wilderness, I mean, you just almost kind of make it off limits. You know, it's there, but, you know, the people really can't go and enjoy it and use it. And, you know, I mean, if you look at every one of these, you know, they're hiking trails, camping, hunting, you know. And so you start limiting the ability of public properties that have been designated for this, so the public can enjoy it and use it.
Well, everybody has tight budgets, and the more land that's in wilderness, the less management responsibility the agencies would have. And I don't know if that's part of the motivation or not, but that's actual.
Probably wouldn't manage to just let it grow up, couldn't be touched.
May I have any comments?
Yeah, I think looking at, at the pictures of the areas there, there are, right now, accessible and by quite a bit of traffic. And I think the issue I see that's most important about it is a safety issue. And if they stop maintaining that, that's not going to keep people from coming. They're going to continue to come. But there's a safety issue involved in that, which, you know, we can send this resolution. I don't know if it's going to help any, but.
Well, there was a bill introduced in the Senate, I believe. And it passed committee, as I understand, that said that if, that every county where wilderness was being proposed would need the consent and agreement of the county commissioners in that county. So, and I know that almost all of our western counties have sent a letter saying that they support that legislation to give commissioners a more direct say. So in my opinion.
Well, you know, when, the first thing we sent was, you know, we opposed it, kind of. And, and, you know, they just kind of throwed it out and said, well, we need more specifics. And, you know, why? And so that's what we're doing here.
Kevin?
I have heard from several, I guess you would call them conservation-minded residents who are, appreciate us doing this and calling, you know, that they don't want more wilderness. They kind of like the way it is. And, but I have heard from residents that have encouraged us to do this. And when we passed the resolution before, they, I remember they contacted me and thanked us for doing it. So I wanted everybody to know that.
Anything else, any other comments?
I was just wondering, Ira, what percentage of our land is national forest land in Haywood? We're a third.
I think it's 36.
36%?
Ballpark.
Close to 40.
And you go to Swain, and Jackson, probably.
Swain is higher, Swain is higher, Graham is the highest.
Yeah, if the trend continues, you've got 40% of your acreage is being almost wilderness and inaccessible, then that's not, that doesn't lend itself to a healthy balance, I don't think.
Yeah, 36% is the federal land.
Any other comments? If not, then would entertain a motion that authorizes our county manager to send additional comments as described to the United States Forest Service to support our prior resolution.
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous, thank you. And we'll stay with Ira for the last item of new business, which is approval to send a letter to the Haywood County Board of Education regarding the purchase of approximately two acres of vacant land located near the former Crabtree Elementary School to be used for the Highway 209 Convenience Center. And further, for permission for the county manager and staff to negotiate the terms of that. Ira?
Yes, we've been looking for years and have looked at several sites. I know I've investigated, in just the three years I've been here, probably four sites, five sites. And I know that before I came for the past decade, dozens of sites have been looked at to move the 209 Convenience Center. It's not really a good location. And so, there is a very good site out there in the vacant school land. We've talked with, you know, they sent us a letter from the school and basically said, do you want this? And this would allow me to go with a formal response to them and to negotiate. What I'm proposing to you is that we would pay fair market value. It is the school system. That we would bear all the costs, because this is basically a benefit, and they know we've been looking for years, bear all the cost of any repairs to the site. That we would have the site on the side next to the school fenced appropriately to the Town of Waynesville requirements. We would work with DOT to see what kind of buffering along the 209 side since that's in there right of way along the highway side. We would bear the cost of replacing anything that, you know, any of the septic or anything out there that needed to be done. These are the things I'm proposing we would do, and that we would widen the driveway. It won't be the least expensive site you have, but it's probably the best solution if they will agree to this, 4209. I mean, having looked at, we can't expand where we are because of the design and where it goes. it goes. We can't go back off of that property and make it safer, and you're right, hanging out on the road. I looked at another property that was up from there, the soils didn't work out, and it was too close to the water. We looked at a third property that was there, and it, the acreage was not as much as this, so it would be a little difficult to maneuver it, and plus, we had some difficulties with trying to work with the landowner, so this is your best option, and I would, I would ask for this.
Yeah, well, three of us have been on this board since 2002, and I, speaking for myself, I've had more complaints about that particular site than all the rest of them put together. It's been accidents, it's unsafe, and it's, unless it's, the situation is solved, I think, yeah, I don't think you can continue on indefinitely with that site.
It's too small. I mean, I use it, that's the one I use, and it's, it's just too small. It's, you can't, it's one way in, one way out. It's a hard turn to get in from my direction, and then it's, you know, you just have to wait for the, for the person in front of you. You can't go, it's narrow. You can't do.
If you have, other than, if you have like a 250 pickup truck, which a lot of people do, or an extended cab with a questionable turning radius, you really can't get in traveling north. It's a three-point turn on Highway 209, which you don't want to, don't want to do if you can avoid it. It's very dangerous.
It is dangerous.
Yeah, so, and I think the school system is, is very, is interested in assisting us in this, from what I understand. I think they're going to take it up tonight.
Yes, they are. They sent us a letter, basically opening the negotiations.
Right, so, so we appreciate that board working with the county to solve a problem, hopefully. So, any other comments or questions?
What, what is the, the reason for the wording of the Town of Waynesville requirements on the privacy slats? Is it, is it just a reference to the requirements?
That's my understanding.
Yes, it's just a reference so that, so that we have a baseline of, you know, if we're, if we're looking at screening from the side on the school, so they have models they can look at what, it's a reference. It's not in the Town of Waynesville, it's just a reference so that somebody could say, okay, I can go out and see what the Town of Waynesville, there are, there are properties. Mooney Cove is a property they can look at and see what we've done. Hazelwood is a property they can look at and see what we've done.
Okay, okay.
Because those all meet the Town of Waynesville requirements.
All right.
Any other questions or observations?
You know, Ira, you and I have talked about it. We're at a point where, where if we don't find property, we're going to have to close it. I mean, that's really the, only two options I see, if you're worried about safety, and no one, no one's come forward with land yet that is suitable.
Sooner or later, you do have to definitely, we have talked, weigh those kind of options if you can't come up with a better solution than where we're at. You are correct.
The whole time I've been on the board, it's been a concern of the citizens in that area, is, you know.
Yeah, it is.
You know, you need to find us a better place, and we've, we've looked ever since I've been on the board, we, you know, we've identified several sites, tried to look at them, and.
There's been groups of citizens that have gone out and tried to find a site because they're concerned, so. Okay, if there's nothing further, then we request approval for Ira to forward the letter that's in our briefing books to the school system and authorize him and his staff to negotiate terms with the Board of Education.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, that concludes our agenda. Is there any other business for the board?
Just one comment, the 211 celebration, you know, Clyde went very well, so.
911.
911, why I say 211? 911.
It's 211th group that went over.
Yeah, 211.
Did it rain over there?
No, it rained, rain missed us.
Mr. County man, County attorney?
Just wanted to tell the board and the public that last night, we had a banquet over with the Register of D's Association, of which I have represented for 20 years in the legislature. I just wanted folks to know that Commissioner Kirk Patrick came over and had dinner with us, he and his wife, Christie, and he sang the National Anthem and sang it beautifully. We were all proud of him, and I was just walking around with my chest out, so proud of Kirk.
Well, I heard him sing it as well, so does a good job. Anything else? Okay, do entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.